I call the county council meeting to order tonight. It's November 29th, 2016. Our invitation made by Councilman Jones and then we're safe to adjourn. It's not as obvious as staying.
Please join me in a word prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to better our community, to better Lawrence County. Right now, there's many people out there that have been affected by these wildfires. We ask that you help us to help them put their lives back together and get some of the things that they've lost back to their, back to normalcy in their life. We ask you to help us unite our county, state, and country, to come to the table and work together. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with our first responders, law enforcement, EMS, firefighters. We ask that you continue to be with the firefighters that we, that have been volunteering and going up to Pickens to help out, to fight these fires. Dear Heavenly Father, we're very thankful for the rain today. We need more of it. Just keep sending the rain. In our Heavenly Father's name, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Stuart White. I'm the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight's approval is agenda with any additions or deletions. Before we ask for motion, I'm going to Mr. Croush and one has add two contractual matters to his agenda session. And are there anything else? If not, I'll ask for motion for approval of our agenda for November 29th.
So move second.
Motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Next thing is approval of minutes, and before I do this, I'd like to call attention to a couple of weeks ago, I wanted to find something that's in minutes back 2013. And many, many, many thanks to Stuart White. They just put this website up that you can go to now, all the way back to like probably about 10, I forgot exactly where it was, and you can click on it and it'll pull minutes up just like that. Saves you from having to run past, and I'd just like to tell you why I thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
And she didn't charge us a dime to do it. Thank you. And I appreciate you letting her do it.
She told me what to do. Let's get that straight.
Well, I'm going to ask for approval of minutes for November 8th, regular session at council on November 17th, 2016, as committee on public works meeting. Are there any additions or deletions? If not, I'll ask for motion to approve our minutes.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got motion, we have second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. First thing tonight is Ms. Lisa Kirk, Finance Director. Is she here? Yeah. She gonna give us a monthly report. And she's on tab three.
Good evening.
So before you start, just so y'all know, because we're not going to have our second meeting in December, we'll get our December monthly report, first meeting in January, and then we'll get the December report. The first meeting in January, we'll get the report for November's actuals, and then we'll get December's actuals at the second meeting in January. Sorry, Lisa.
That's okay. You received in your packet a copy of the financial report as of October 31st, 2016. At the current time, in our expenditure category, we should have used 33% of our budget. The general fund stands at 34, and this is mainly due to annual contracts that have already been prepaid. Our EMS is at 30%, our victim's assistance is at 33, solid waste at 23, our medical indigent is at 50, and this is because of the quarterly payments we stayed, and we have already made our first and second quarter payments. ZF bond is at 100%. We have received the revenue and pickup for bond, and our TAC currently stands at zero. And our revenues, of course, until about February, our revenues are going to be, are not going to really show a true future because we haven't collected the tax revenues, but our general fund stands at, we've collected 13% of our budget in revenues, EMS at 21, victim's assistance at 30, solid waste at 5, medical indigent at 8, ZF funds at 100, and our TAC educational is at 6%.
May I ask a question about the revenues?
Yes, sir.
This is through October, right?
Yes, sir.
So that is, we're into the second quarter of the fiscal year.
Yes, sir.
With that, with that little amount, and I, I get it, the taxes have not been collected. I get that. How, how are we, on the expense side, balancing only 13% of the revenue coming in? I'm asking. I do not know.
How are we balanced?
In terms, in terms of cash flow, yeah, how does that work? That's, that's one of the models I presented when I presented some financial figures about how normally we run in the black, three months out of the year. This would scare anybody in the private sector. We run in the red, 75% of our year. So really, it's one of these things like a farmer, we got to put all our, our money away and then make sure we make it through the rest of the year. This is why fund balance and keeping a healthy fund balance is extremely important.
Correct. That's my point. So basically, we're using the fund balance to run the operations of the county until such time as the revenue is collected.
Correct.
But to my knowledge, since I have served on this council, we have never issued a tax anticipation notice, basically along. Is that correct?
And then once you, once you start issuing those, this is what Abbyville County's dealing with, you, it is very difficult to get out of that cycle. And so they're now having to do tax increases, significant tax increases to get out of that cycle. Plus, you're paying interest on money that you're going to have to short-term borrow in order to pay back. That's why, again, you're absolutely correct, our fund balance is extremely important.
And thanks to the good cash management that we have demonstrated by our county treasurer, we have not had any problems in leading any of our expenses.
Go ahead. Thank you.
That's really all I have unless someone has questions.
Does anyone have any other question?
I do. Mr. Canning, are you, are you meeting with the department heads as it relates to their budgets throughout the year? Just as a touch base, where you are and what you're planning and stuff.
Not, not yet, not yet. But, but I am keeping a close eye on things, and, and whenever something pops out, I'm hitting the departments up. But once we get into a more formal schedule with the, with the budgets and things like that, then we'll, we'll be going over these. The department heads are definitely, the technical reports are expected to look at their monthly reports. All of this information is now available, thanks to Kelly Jones on the website on a monthly basis. All of our financial information, lots of audits are out there too. So the departments are required to regularly monitor their budgets. And as you may know, this year, the institute did a line item control where individual departments are not allowed to exceed their individual line items this year when it comes to spending. That's really not going to be an issue at this point, but it's definitely going to be an issue as we get later in the fiscal year and people start running on line and individual line items. But we'll start making sure that the departments who probably are already doing a good job of controlling their spending are regularly monitoring their budget on a regular basis.
So what happens if a department head requisitioned something in a line item that exceeds the line item budget amount?
She's supposed to catch it and flag it, but I can't promise it won't happen 100%. But right now, what I've asked her to do is to please flag it, send it back to the department, and tell them they have insufficient funds. And then we're going to work through those different issues.
Are there any other questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, real quick. For everybody's information, that, all those financial reports are at lawrencecounty.us/ financial reports are where those are located.
Are there anyone else? Thank you, Lisa. Next thing I'll ask Greg Lim to come over. He's a county fire director.
I want to give county councilmen just a brief report. As Mr. Jones said earlier, the Pickens County Fire that was, kind of a mountain fire, back on November, November 14th, there was a request for assistance statewide to send engines, tankers, forest trucks, personnel up there to assist with the, with the forest fire. Lawrence County Fire Service did, we had several volunteers that wanted to go. These volunteers took time away from their jobs, their families, could not get paid a dime to go up there. We sent a total of two forest trucks, one engine, and a total of over 20 personnel from that Wednesday, 16th, all the way into the weekend. They worked 12-hour shifts from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Most of what they did was protecting structures, homes, businesses, that type of thing, water show, and LZ, landing zone protection for the military helicopters that were doing the dropping water with the, with the buckets. I can't say enough about a volunteer. Without the volunteers, we would not have a Lawrence County Fire Service. We have 300 volunteers, and I think it speaks highly of Lawrence County to have these men and women that volunteered their time to go and to serve. And those fire departments, they had people that went, I just want to say this real quick, were the Graymore Fire Department, Derby Creek Fire Department, Younges Fire Department, and Western Lawrence Fire Department.
Thank you, Greg. As a known, the whole council, council thanks for what they did, what they're doing.
Thank you.
There was a donation of supplies to the, or the local.
Yes, we had the local, Sanlot Lawrence donated several pallets of water, and we had a crew, a truck, a trailer that went and picked that up and delivered that also to Pickens County for the firefighters. So, so we also want to thank Sanlot for their donation of wood. Thank you all.
I've always said, there's nothing like seeing heaven coming when you need it, and that's one thing I always say about the fire department. I had a, I didn't, I apologize, I didn't, but there was a truck, truck, truck raiding around my house about a week ago, and a car turned over and it's laying in it, and fire department on the scene, just like that. And they stayed out there, and they pulled the trucks off. So thank you very much. All of the volunteers. Next thing, Mr. Canning.
Debbie here? Debbie, you here? I think you are, you're high.
Well, none of them are as powerful as me.
All right, what was I up to the past few weeks? We, we had a meeting, which was a very informative meeting with the South Carolina Department of Revenue. Jim Coleman put it, put it together. A very informative meeting on felos, and they gave us some information on felos. I found it really interesting about how the South Carolina Department of Revenue, especially the upstate area, they really understand, you know, they, they have this role, of course, of being the Department of Revenue and enforcing tax rules and whatnot, but they also understand the importance of felos and jobs and development. And it was very, it was very evident from these folks that they understand they're not just out there regulating folks, they also need to be working with industries to help industries. Of course, they're going to have to do their job when industries are not paying their bills, but I was really pleased to see that. I was also pleased, after 15 years of working in Georgia, to see, and I've seen this repeatedly in this state, how receptive the state agencies are to working with the locals. I know we talk about what they don't do for us, like the local government fund, I'm not excusing that by any means, you know, it is a constant issue with dealing with limited resources. But I can tell you for sure, here in the state, we have a much better partnership between the state government and the local government than they do in Georgia, and it's really good to see. So that was very informative. Also was able to participate in a seminar over at the YMCA. There's an initiative you may or may not have heard about yet, you're probably going to hear more about it, is the Eat Smart, Move More. It's a health initiative to look at making this county more healthy, getting people to eat healthy and, and to do more, more exercise, move more. It's a partnership, I believe, with GHS, if I'm not mistaken, and I know Self Memorial is also involved in that partnership too. You'll probably hear a lot more about that, that stuff. I know there is one, one department here that is working within the county to look at trying to, to do something within that one department, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to build on that countywide. Currently, our health insurance rating is 20% higher than the South Carolina pool, so we actually are penalized on our health insurance due to, due to the lack of good health within our own organization. So this can not only help the employees, help them be, you know, better motivated workers themselves, help them in their own personal lives, it can also be a financial help to us. So I'm hoping we can do some more work with that. We did have a chance to meet with the Mountville Fire Department. We do have a meeting set up next week with the Joanna Fire Department. Those are the three remaining fire departments, Reno, Mountville, and Joanna, who have not yet signed those contracts. I believe Mountville has, they listened to us, heard their concerns, and I believe they're going to go ahead and execute that contract. We're hoping next week we'll get Joanna to execute the contract, and then we'll just be left with, with Reno, and then we'll have that issue resolved. We did hold an energy efficiency study meeting, and we do have some, some reports and things that we're going to be looking at, some studies. I believe it's on tonight's agenda, is it? Rob? Okay. But we're going to be bringing some stuff back to you, some ways that we're going to be able to reduce costs through energy efficiency, and we're going to be studying that further and bringing that to you. Hopefully, we'll be able to save some money in that regard. We are starting to meet with all of the courthouse departments. This is in regards to the work of the Public Works Subcommittee, looking at the roof, looking at also the entire courthouse. I know there's some difference of opinions on council as to the magistrate's office, but there are some other offices in there that are crammed on top of each other. Council, if you haven't done this yet, I do encourage you to go visit with the Building Coast Department on the other end and see how closely packed in the Building Coast folks are. Also, if you get a chance, knock on the door to the solicitor's office and go in there and see how packed the solicitor's office can be. If you can get in there when they have one of their busy times, that's a good time to see how there's a problem there at the entrance. There's a lot of need to do a lot of different things at the courthouse. We're going to be getting together a long list. Rob's taking a lead on this. To that Public Works Subcommittee, and we have one agenda item this evening talking about the, the bond and putting away some of the money for the roof, but there's a lot more work. Some of it's going to be wants, some of it's going to be needs. We're not going to be able to afford all of it, maybe none of it, but we're going to bring all that to the Public Works Subcommittee. Hopefully, that Subcommittee will bring that back to the full council, and we'll be able to take a look at all of the issues dealing with the courthouse. But we have started those meetings with the individual departments at the courthouse. The Planning Commission met, they have finished the mobile home ordinance. The mobile home ordinance does have some parts of it that are tied to our subdivision regulations, so they've decided to postpone bringing the individual mobile home ordinance back to this council before we get the subdivision regulations finalized. So we're working now with the Planning Commission on a redo of the subdivision regulations, and then we'll be bringing both of those ordinances back to, Planning Commission will bring those back to this council for final adoption. I did reach out to the new sheriff-elect and also the existing sheriff on working on some transitions between those two and, and the offices there. The sheriff-elect is going to be working out of our Hillcrest office upstairs, working with the personnel at the sheriff's office on some transition type of stuff. We're continuing to, to do what we can to try to help smooth that transition. Finally, there was a Trails meeting. I know a couple of council members were present, I appreciate you being there, on the Swamp Rabbit Trail held out at the ridge there. A good participation in that meeting, it was very good to see the participation. You're going to hear a lot more about not only the Swamp Rabbit Trail, but trails in general and recreation. This all ties in with, with everything we're talking about of having a good quality of life here in Lawrence County, so that people want to stay here, people want to move into our county, and people want to invest in our county. These, these things are all intertwined. So you're going to hear a lot more about, about trails and recreation. That's all I have to report. I'm going to go ahead and hand out this next thing. Debbie's going to be here too to present this to you. We're just going to present this to you tonight. We've already given you a draft of the Personnel Policy Manual. This is the next agenda, I believe. And we're just going to hand this to you tonight, so that y'all have a chance to look this up. We're hoping maybe we can get this back before council for possible adoption on the 13th of December.
Thank you, Mr. Canning.
Everybody get one. Maybe this is mine.
All right, next thing is, uh... You through?
Yeah, yeah.
Next thing is second reading ordinance, 825.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do want to present this to you, just give you a little heads up.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Do you want to roll or you don't need to roll? Okay. What we, what we did is we had an audit done of our current policies and procedures. Our current book is, is a little, little more than 40 pages. This book is about 89 pages or so. This has had a thorough legal review. A lot of this is legalese, bringing us up to speed with current federal and state regulations, in particular, federal regulations. So that's a lot of what's in there. There has been a few changes. I did highlight a few of the things that are really going to come jump out at, at you, possibly from the employees of the county. These are things I just wanted you to be aware of in advance. Currently, the administrative employees in the county have a normal work schedule of nine to five, and we are looking at reducing the current one-hour paid lunch down to 30 minutes paid lunch. So that's one, one change that we're proposing in this manual. Number two, they are beginning with new hires only, and I want to again emphasize, this is new hires only as well as being proposed. I'm not proposing that we take this away from existing employees, but starting with new, new hires, only regular full-time employees will be given paid leave, no paid leave for part-time or temporary employees, as is the current policy. Again, that will only be for new hires. This is just a proposal, this is just a suggestion, y'all are in charge, y'all can tell me no, that's not what we're going to do, but this is just something that we're proposing here in regards to new hires and temporary employees. Also, beginning with new hires only, the next page there, you can see our existing policy, which is not included in this policy manual. Again, y'all are in charge, you can make this change should you decide to, but we're no, we're proposing that we no longer offer, again, for new hires only, not existing employees, we no longer offer a lifetime health insurance paid by the Lawrence County tax hires. That's something that we're suggesting we consider revising for new hires only. And again, this all applies only to direct reports, those are people that work directly for you, those folks who work for appointed and elected officials. These policies really don't legally apply to them unless they basically allow us to have those policies adopted for their own employees. We will go through a process of getting them to give us in writing their approval that their employees are also subject to these policies about the county, for the county. Some other proposals, because I know we're proposing to take some things away from employees here, some other proposals that we're looking at in terms of probably looking at trying to give some, provide some things back. And I've given you also, the third page there is, is some work that Debbie and I have started, looking at a compensation study and a multi-phase approach, looking at compensation, I'll go over that in a minute. But under this first memo there, two things I wanted to highlight. One thing is currently, our employees are not required to fill out individual time sheets. Time sheets are filled out by the department. This is more of a procedural thing, just to kind of give you a heads up, doesn't necessarily require county council approval, but we're going to require that the individual employees actually log their time, sign off on their own time sheets. That'll be a proposal that we're proposing to do. That's more of a procedural change. One thing that will require county council approval is we're looking at changing the current longevity salary in this, and that's where you can flip over to the compensation study. Debbie and I have looked at a four, three or four-phase approach to this. The first phase is something we'd like to implement as soon as we possibly can. It should have a minimal, if any, financial impact. I know there's, when you do the math, there's a little bit of a financial impact, but basically what we offer now is every five years, an employee will get a 3.5% increase in pay. That's a little too far, in my opinion, to dangle that carrot out for a five-year period. It's also not really fair for a new employee who gets hired to be paid the same amount of money as a person who's been on our payroll for four years. A new employee is running around just trying to figure out what's going on. Those existing employees are much more efficient. It's kind of demoralizing to the, to the existing employees when they're getting paid as the same as a new hire. So what we're proposing there is we take that 3.5% over, over five years, which is 0.7% a year, and do that every other year. So every two years would be 1.4% increase is what we're proposing. I'm trying to figure out how we could do that without messing up people, and for some reason, it came to me in the middle of the night, I had to write it down. I don't know why these things happen, but you've got a little chart there that kind of makes it fair. Without getting too much in depth, but that chart there is on the second, basically, it will make it fair to everybody. So existing employees that are getting real close to their fourth year, they're between their second and their fourth year, and they're looking and they're seeing that 3.5 year, five year, 3.5% on the horizon, they would basically get to 2.8% now, and then they would be plugged into a 1.4% every two years from that point forward. Those others who have passed that four-year mark and are going towards that five-year, they're almost there to that 3.5%, they will still get their 3.5%. The following year, they'll get 0.7, and then every two years, they'll be plugged in. That cycle just repeats itself depending on the number of years. So, you know, you can see there how it works. Basically, it repeats itself every five years. That's something we're proposing. It will take county council approval for us to go ahead and do that. It shouldn't be a financial impact or a significant financial impact. If you really want to split hairs, yes, 1.4% every two years is different to 3.5% every five years, but it's not going to be that significant of a financial impact. And I think it will greatly increase employee morale and, and help save us money through efficiencies and employee, employee morale and whatnot. We've also given you an idea of what we're planning to look at in terms of future phases, just to kind of introduce you to that. A lot of work needs to get over to this next thing, which is a comprehensive wage analysis. This county has been talking about wages. I saw something as back, far back as 1994, where we've talked about, we need to do something with our wages. Debbie has been working really hard of getting the information, and we're both looking at comparing with apples to apples with Greenwood County, or apples to apples with another county of a similar size, to see, are our wages truly out of whack? Our system is very complex. When, when I first came here, Ms. Anderson, Councilwoman Anderson, asked for a simple report on how much our clerks are getting paid, Debbie couldn't produce that report. And the reason is because we have a very crazy compensation program, and each individual employee gets a different pay. Clerks that do the same kind of job should get the same kind of pay. You paid for that study in 2008. Y'all never implemented it in 2008. Part of this, we'll introduce that back, and we'll start fixing these things. Again, we're going to fix these things so that they don't impact negatively existing employees. We're not saying, hey, you're now making $12 an hour, but based on the studies, you're only going to make $10 an hour, therefore, we should cut your pay. We're not proposing that. We're just saying, when new hires... the second, first, the latter part of the first quarter of next year, which will be tying into our budget, because of course there's a price tag associated with this. And we gotta have a good feeling of that price tag. All this is gonna have to tie into a financial plan, et cetera. Once you get your program fixed, and once we get our program fixed, and we know that we're paying our people a market wage compared to what the market will dictate, the next step is to keep it up. We're not doing anybody any favors by not paying to keep that wage up with basically inflation. So we're looking at phase three, which is some kind of cost of living increase. We're not talking about a raise, but we're talking about keeping wages up with inflation so that people are not going backwards on the pay. And that phase three, we're looking at probably not implementing until, at best FY seventeen, next fiscal year, probably it's gonna be FY eighteen. Along with that though, we're gonna hopefully be able to present you with an idea of not only just giving somebody a cost of living increase, but actually implementing something along the lines of a pay-for-performance type situation. I wasn't a big fan of pay-for-performance myself, sometimes these things can be political, but I have learned a lot more about a plan that Greenwood County implemented, they actually copied Charleston County's plan, and it does look like it has a lot of merits to it. That one's gonna be a lot harder to implement, so we're looking at possibly FY nineteen before we do that. But rather than just give everybody a standard cost of living, whether you're a performer or not, we're gonna also provide you with an option of looking at some kind of pay-for-performance. Again, that's a longer-range view, what we'd like to have you take a look at in the near future, is this thing about changing the longevity sometime in the near future. Any one?
Not unless anybody had any questions, I mean, you pretty much cover it all.
Does anyone have any questions?
I've got a few comments.
Okay.
I just sat here and did some simple math. And if you took a fifty-thousand-dollar employee, which we don't have many of, I understand, and if you implemented that one-point-four, 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 up to what normally would equal to three-point-five percent, that comes out of fifty-two thousand, one-twenty-nine versus if you did the three-point-five, they would jump to fifty-one, seven-fifty. So there is a, there is a financial impact.
There is.
And when we, you know, I'm not opposed to paying our employees, but at the same time, we, this past year, some of my colleagues have helped me out, a fifty cent per raise per hour cost us a half million dollars, is that right?
Yes, it did.
So this could be a significant amount of money. So before I can sign off on this, I'd like to see the whole model run with our entire personnel throughout fifteen years.
We can do that.
I mean, that's a lot of work to ask you and your folks to do, I understand that, but at the same time, I don't think we can pass that if it's a significant amount of money.
We can do that, sure.
That was the only comment I had.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm just happy that we are looking at the settlement for the employees because they are important, and that we can do something to help the employees out if we can. I think they are an asset to the company if they are working employees, and I hate to see so many differences within the organization. And it has always been here, and it seems like it's very hard to get to the root of the problem, but I think we can get to the root of the problem and see into the future and make it better for everybody's concern. Because we talk about it, we do a good talk, but we do not walk the line that we are supposed to walk, and that is not the best way to be. If you want to do something, you ought to be able to stand for it. Now, stand for something, you stand for nothing. A lot of times, our mouth and our position is not in tight with each other. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to do what we're doing and be able to stand up for what we do.
I just wanted to real quick too, Mr. Chairman, I also really like the idea, it's a great incentive, you know, to shorten that longevity from five years to two years. I mean, that would be a really good thing. I share some of Mr. Pitt's concerns also on that, but if we can do it without financial, because the initial way I was reading this was that the one-point-four, instead of just waiting five years to get the three-point-five, you would get the one-point-four every two years instead, so yeah, I think that's a great incentive to get people to work in Lawrence County. So thank you.
It all boils down to bottom line, revenue. You can't do it if you ain't got the revenue.
We're working on that piece today.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Debbie.
With some of the proposed changes that we'd like to look at in the model of our structure, we would compensate some of that, alleviate some of that cost.
I'm sorry, how, how are you talking about?
Some of the changes that you mentioned previously in the structure, part-time employees not receiving the grant of benefits, and part-time new hires, and the one that you mentioned looking at on page, that Mr. Cane mentioned, we did the document itself, we're reviewing it page three.
Well, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The whole issue for many folks becomes insurance. How would an employee who worked twenty-eight years, who would cover that employee's insurance if we will no longer be covering? I'm asking.
Okay, if an employee works here twenty-eight years.
If they work here twenty-eight years now, currently, it's an unfunded liability, and the county must pay their insurance for the remainder of their life.
Correct.
Until they move on to Medicare.
And then we pay their Medicare supplement.
So what will happen with new hires at the conclusion of twenty-eight years?
Trump care.
All right.
Exactly. Exactly.
That sounds like a little wrong with you.
It's not gonna affect the existing employees, again, I want to point that out, anybody who's currently in the system, we're talking about new employees. So new employees, I mean, that's twenty-eight, thirty years from now, who knows? They may not have health insurance in thirty years, but you're right, I mean, it is taking away a benefit.
I mean, it's a significant benefit.
It is a significant benefit, but it's just not a benefit that's being offered anymore in today's, in today's world.
It's the same as commercial world, you don't have that offering in the commercial world, when you walk away from the business, you walk away from the pitch, you really don't have any.
A lot of pension plans are changing. They used to be, a lot of people could look long, but they are changing with society.
I'm glad you all are not in the General Assembly for my health insurance. I'm such a bad...
Even in the state, I mean, a lot of counties, and it's not a shame, the state even adopted a policy around two thousand and ten or eleven, that they no longer provided for retirees after anybody that was fired here, from August fifteenth, two thousand and ten, with grandfather ends, anyone was hired after that, that plan just kind of ended away.
Well, it's the rule of ninety, I believe, is what it is. That presents a lot of problems for, let's face it, our wages are not really good for our county employees. I think that presents problems for you and your administration to hire people and recruit people.
Actually, based on some of the preliminary numbers, our wages are actually maybe a little bit on the high end on some of the lower-end things based on the pay rates. So, you know, I don't know that our wages, I know the perception of our wages are off, and they are off in some areas. You'll see some significant things based on just preliminary information, with EMS gets several dollars per hour off with fire and maybe even police. A lot of our staff is already compensated similar to what Greenwood County's paying. Now, we're not gonna be able to probably compete with some of the private sector jobs, and that's where we have things like pensions, and that's where things like the state PIB programs are incredible. We have incredible programs through the state, you know, for just a very fraction amount of money, you can get disability insurance, which would cost you, you can't afford disability insurance on the private, in the private sector. And coming from the private sector, I can tell you, the benefits that we offer are huge through the state retirement program. And the fact, even though it's changed the rule of ninety, it used to be with class-two employees, you could retire, you know, you had five years before you were vested, and then, you know, the rules changed, now you have to have eight years before you're vested, that state had to change those programs about, I think it was two thousand and eleven, two thousand and ten. Even though they changed those rules then, they're still very generous. In fact, what happened was, the recession hit, and all these people who no longer had jobs and lost their private sector benefits, such as health insurance and stuff like that, looked and said, hey, we want these public sector jobs, and why are they getting pensions? Now, they didn't realize that they could have taken those same jobs prior to the recession for less money with the benefits, but now that, when, once the recession hit, things are changing now, we had less than five percent preliminary unemployment last month, so the economy's picked back up. But when you look at it from a private sector perspective, the benefits that we offer, they do add a lot to the wages that we pay. Maybe we're not able to pay a receptionist the same amount as somebody who works in a bank or something along those lines, but our true market and our true competition is the other counties, such as Greenwood County. That's what we need to compare to, that's what we're really working hard to try to get you some numbers on. And again, based on the numbers we're looking at, it looks as though our wages at the lower end are definitely on market. So that perception may not actually be true.
I just think we have to have a plan, if someone gives them their thirty years of their life and career to this county, and we're saying we're not gonna fund their health insurance beyond during their retirement days, that presents problems for, to recruit employees, I believe. What are other counties doing in, the other forty-five counties?
We don't seem to be paying for retirement insurance.
I don't think so.
Our actuary, who, we have to provide every, will provide it this year for sixteen, instructed us, I think it was four years ago, why are you doing this? Other counties don't do that, this is a huge liability, because as their age progresses, so does our liability. And unfortunately, it's, let's count it for just getting away from that, if any still, I don't, I can't think of any that pay for their retirement insurance.
I clearly recognize from the audit that it is a huge unfunded liability. I clearly recognize that the state retirement plan is in dire straits. But I also clearly recognize that health insurance is a huge benefit for people.
It is.
Not only during their working days, but during their retirement days.
It is benefiting, you're absolutely correct.
And that is, that's significant, and I haven't heard tonight what the plan is for those folks. And I assume what I'm hearing is it will be left up to them to go find their own private insurance until they qualify for Medicare or Medicaid.
That'd be for new hires only, again, so existing employees, they're still in the system.
I understand, but new hires only.
And mostly...
My assumption is correct, right? If this were to pass.
If you're a new hire, I don't think a whole lot of new hires are even looking at that as something that's bringing under the job. Most new hires are probably looking at the pay. And where it really gets people is when they're tenured and with us for a long period of time, and it is a great benefit for folks that have been with us a long period of time. By no means am I recommending we take that away from the employees that already have that benefit.
Yeah, I understand it's new hires. On the one hand, I hear you saying this front-end load and give them one-point-four percent, one-point-four percent, but then on the flip side of that, I'm hearing the recommendation from administration is, we're not gonna fund your health insurance beyond your working days. I'm gonna be quiet, Chairman, I'm sorry.
If you got people that are participating in getting this insurance, I know people live longer, but is the rate of people getting this benefit increasing? Or, I mean, people can get it just so long, and if they die, you know, they don't get it anymore. What I want to know is, is the rate increasing the number of people that's getting this benefit? I know the insurance is going up.
And the number of people who are benefiting from this benefit is increasing as well. When someone has, I think, the last five years we called them, had six, you retire and take action on this benefit. We've lost several survivors because when they become Medicare age, at age sixty-five, they can go on Medicare. They can obtain a Medicare supplement outside, that is less expensive for them, and then it doesn't affect county law, at a less rate, and they can get it through the PIB. So it's really beneficial financially if they go outside to get a supplement, once they have their eligibility, if that makes sense.
But it wouldn't benefit them if they were getting it free though, would it?
Well, nothing's free.
Sometimes it's paid.
Yeah. I have not to be disrespectful, but if you look at the numbers, and every year, our benefits, our health insurance, our experience rating climbs. This year, I think it's one-point-six-seven. That causes our premiums increase, that's due to the number of claims that we have. Even though we're in the PIB, we're like a grandkids' stepchild for another state employee, so we don't benefit from their pool. We're seven-three, zero-zero-two, which is our pool, and the number of claims that we have is what affects our premiums by the experience rate. So all of this goes towards our experience rating. Say you have a couple of catastrophic illnesses within our institution, that's gonna drive the claims rate up, that increases premiums. It's not necessarily making the state liable, it's the county liable. But we do have an increase annually of people who benefit from that process as far as the retirement plan. The ninety rule doesn't really affect the insurance part, because that's something that the county does on the someone that doesn't have anything to do with it.
So this is basically something that you want us to go read, and if we got a problem with anything, like come back the next meeting, we'll talk about it.
Correct.
The difference is...
The actual plan as well, which is this part is what we're wanting to implement, this is a lot of generic stuff. The key points, again, I want to make sure I point this out, because there are some changes here that are, you know, maybe not, and not everybody's gonna be happy with these changes, and I know you all made your phone calls and stuff, I want you to be aware of this upfront. Again, this is just a recommendation. We're running the business here, we're just making a recommendation, y'all have the decision, y'all do the debate, whatever y'all decide, we'll implement, of course. But the key changes there are listed under one, two, and three. Administrative employees, nine to five, will be their same working schedule, they'll go from an hour paid lunch down to a half an hour paid lunch. The new hires only, only full-time employees will be paid, will be paid leave under what's currently written in here. Again, we can rewrite it, y'all must rewrite changes to... And then again, this, about the health insurance, the lifetime health insurance paid by the tax payers.
Mr. Cane, do we know, do we have an idea of what kind of impact, financial impact that'll make on the county, cutting the half hour of lunch? Do we have any estimates or anything on it?
Well, that's seven-point-five percent more per day than your estimate.
Not financial, because we're paying a guy for eight hours of work, but we're only getting seven hours out of him then. So there's no financial impact, we're just protocol, automatically go up. And we're paying, am I wrong, Mr. Cane, we're paying an eight-hour day.
Right.
But we're only working seven.
Right.
If you go back to the private sector, I know I go back to that a lot, but in the private sector, I'll work a nine-hour day to get paid free, if I have an hour.
And all we're proposing is to do something similar to what the other counties, other counties, Greenwood, and apparently Pickle County, thirty-seven and a half hours seems to be the standard county government work week. So all we're proposing is to get in line with those other counties.
That's standard for state too, thirty-seven-point-five, that's standard, if they get paid eight hours, that's what the state employees get too.
Are there any other questions?
So this other stuff along with identity and all...
Can they get paid 8 hours? That's what the state employees get, too.
Are there any other questions?
So this other stuff, the long standing, no actions take place in it, we're just, taking, we want to try to give a little bit. That's why we introduced it a little bit earlier than I would have planned. I would have planned to get it to the end of those cycle, we'll quantify that, bring that qualification back to you.
Mr. Long, I have one more question to talk to you about the legislative official. Is, then would this, obviously wouldn't affect the sheriff's department?
No.
As the sheriff's-
Treasuries Office, all the-
The Treasury, the Treasury Office is the one I was thinking of. But they're not paying right now by our same-
They have been utilizing ours, but we're going to formalize that by getting their signed documents, saying that their employees are now. All this rolls into more of a legal, business management type thing. If we end up in a court, we'll make sure we have proper documentation.
Treasury Officer Howard is utilizing our same handbook, but it's proprietary, I guess, based on-
It is. Any elected, any-
It's under our policy.
Any elected or employment official who doesn't adopt our policy is going to quickly find out, first time something goes wrong, they're going to want to be back under our policies. Because all that burden rests with them, and they have to make that-
I would push the burden by your, the burden of any legal assistance burden, all of it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Senator.
Okay, moving on to second reading ordinance 825. Mr. Craig James?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, this is second reading for expansion of the Donaldson Industrial Park in Regal County, here 1% persician. There is an industry that is, has not yet been announced, available before further reading. But there is an industry that we're looking at, and it's providing this property as well. Add a few dollars to our 1% percent, if we receive that, certainly recommend second reading approval of ordinance 825.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion for second reading ordinance 825.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Donaldson ordinance 825, second. Mr. Chairman?
Motion and second, if any further could. Now, we vote by your right hand, I'll unvote. Seven to the right.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution 16-27. I'll call Mr. Craig James again. That's on tab 5.
This is, when we did the Octagon Industrial Park Agreement with Regal County, they have the right to put property in on their side, just as we do in our, this is adding a project into the agreement, which we will receive some remuneration from Regal County. This company, I just found this out today, the name of the company is Poseidon Advanced Materials LLC, formerly known as Poseidon Foundation. This will add them to the Octagon Park Agreement prior to the end of the year, which is very important to them. We would certainly urge approval of this resolution to add Poseidon Advanced Materials LLC to the Octagon Park Agreement, Regal side.
All right, I'll ask for a motion for Resolution 16-27.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion and second, if any further could. Now, we vote by your right hand, I'll unvote. Seven to the right. I'd like to call on Mr. Joey Avery to come forward and offer explanation of what each member of your people received, and bring them forward with you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, it's always a privilege to stand before you with such good news about county employees that we certainly hope we can retain over the years because of the quality of work and the importance that they provide to the citizens of our county. And we've had many great employees come before the council to receive awards and recognition for the work that they do. Tonight, I am proud to present Ms. Becky Bagwell, who was awarded the 2016 Shift Supervisor of the Year at the South Carolina 911 Conference in October. Becky? Mr. Chairman, I think you got something to present to the young men. Media, if we could get the pictures, if you're going to take them, because we are engaged in some training of the new 911 equipment. And so, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, I apologize, they will be leaving shortly after presentation. So, thank you.
Sit. Therefore, bid for the laws of Orange County Council, on the second reading, some of those you write, recognize that the men, Becky Bagwell, upon the event, have received the 2016 Shift Supervisor of the Year award in the state of South Carolina, the Year 2016. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, our next awardee is Angie Oseltine. She was awarded the EMS Telecommunicator of the Year 2016 at the South Carolina EMS Symposium back in February. Angie?
All they're saying, so I'm not going to go back and read everyone. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, our next awardee will be Joey Shay. She was awarded the Palmetto Award 2016 at the South Carolina 911 Conference in October. And the Palmetto Award is the equivalent to the Employee of the Year Award for our partners on State level.
Thank you, Mr. Joey Shay.
Mr. Chairman, last but not least of our awardees is Ms. Karen Bridges. She was awarded the Palmetto Award 2015 at the 911 Conference at Marle Beach, but she was bashed off, didn't want to appear by herself, so we got her with the group.
Thank you, Ms. Karen.
I appreciate everything y'all do. I went down, I've been down there several times, and unbelievable what y'all did down there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I certainly appreciate you taking the time to recognize these individuals that worked so hard behind the scene. And we have some great employees in this county, and they make our jobs as managers easy. So I would say to them, thank you, good job you did. So you called Fran Gase and Trane, when we took a break, Sandy, we're going to continue back at the EOC, okay? Thank you so much.
Joey, I'm going to call you back again.
Yes, sir.
For FEMA grant approval.
Yes, sir.
That's on tab 7.
What you have before you is a request to approve a hazard mitigation grant that we requested in 2015 through FEMA, and this grant is for the purchase of weather radios. And the reason we're sort of late in implementing this project is because the grant was awarded for $30,000. The federal share was 75% or $22,500. $7,500 had to be comprised of money that came from council during deliberation of budget process or other means. So in 2015, my request was denied to have that matching fund. So in 2016, I submitted it again, and thank you for approving that $7,500 match in the grant, in the 2016-2017 budget. We hope to have this grant executed immediately. If it's approved tonight, we will begin the process of taking quotes and bids for weather radios that we will give out to our citizens. The weather radio is a device that we could put into homes of people who do not have smartphones and those kind of things that have the technology. And we're going to use many different organizations to help us identify those individuals and to distribute those to the citizens of the county, if you so approve tonight. So we do have the money approved for the match in our budget, so that was the hard part.
So all the money is there?
Yes, sir. The money is there.
That's 900 radios, I believe, I missed.
Across the 900, at the time that I did the estimated cost of the radios, now I'm hoping that the cost of those radios have come down so we can have more to give out. And those will be given out throughout the cities and the county for the citizens.
Does anyone have any questions? Joey? Thank you very much, Joey.
Yes, sir.
You will need a motion in a second. Go through that, right?
Yes, I need a, I need a motion and second approval, so I can spend the money.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion for the FEMA grant approval.
I'll say.
Motion and second.
Motion is accepted for FEMA grant. The money's already allocated, our force is all through the motions to accept the FEMA grant.
Yeah. Are there any other questions? If not, we'll vote by your right hand, I'll vote. Seven to the right. I'd like to call on Mr. Stuart Jones for further word of subcommittee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rush, can you please hit the, turn on the whiteboard.
I went to the meeting, and I have to say that Stuart had a very informative meeting. He had a lot of pictures, and he showed a lot of things that needed to be done in this county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. What I've got here, council members have, and the committee, I appreciate all the hard work of the Public Works Subcommittee. We, I went around and took some pictures, and we walked around the Hillcrest facility, just looking at all the leaks. We've known for some time there's a roof problem there, and it keeps getting worse and worse. So what we're essentially looking at here is, soon as this comes up, I can show you just how, how bad some of it is. We've got a number of issues that need to be addressed in the Hillcrest facility, to bring it up to speed and to get things more efficient in there, also on top of the roof. So that all plays into our long-term planning, though, that we're working on. We should, we should have some more information on, on the, on some renovations and so forth in the next two months. But what we've got here, something that needs, thank you, thank you, Mr. Rush, something that needs immediate attention are, basically we're replacing the entire roof at Hillcrest Square Facility. It's a 75,000 square foot. When we had it, we did an estimate, had some estimates done on it last year, and they were around $509,000, $510,000 if we did the whole thing at one time. But basically, you can see, this is all over the building. You can see, this is a common, unfortunate, a common thing in the Hillcrest facility. There's buckets. With the drought that we were having, you know, it wasn't as bad, this was during the drought that these pictures were actually taken. But, you know, the more and more rain we have, the worse it gets. Some parts are worse than others, but really, the entire roof, you can see, this is just pretty wild right here. So much water is falling down through there, they would put a bucket right there to catch it. So, and this is kind of, this is really troubling. You see where this is one of the records, I think these are plaits, actually, right here, and you've got, you know, water dripping in record rooms, and just all over the place. Let's keep going here. I tried to take a picture of every, every leak that I saw, and there's a bucket right there, they would move it out here to catch the water. So what we looked at is, how can we get this fixed, you know, immediately? Basically, the, we've got it lined currently, we've got some remaining funds, $269,277 in the remaining bond that we can use. We need to clarify that that bond can be used for this purpose, but we can use it toward the roof. The Subcommittee of Public Works decided that that would be the best use of those funds to put it toward the new roof at Hillcrest Square, and to also ask for the difference in funding. Once again, around $510,000 is the total of the replacement of the entire roof, so the difference of the funding, funding coming from the reserve fund. There are also, just to let you know, we're working right now with, you know, state legislators and working on some things with the state to try also to get some funding. Because as you know, there's the solicitor's office, the magistrates, there's a lot of state functions in Hillcrest Building. So they, at this point, we may be able to get some more funding from them February or March, but the immediate thing that we're asking for, that the committee's asking for, is to go ahead and replace this roof entirely. So that brings me to my, my first resolution here tonight, is 2016-28, which that resolution clarifies the reassignment of the funds from the Hillcrest bond to be used for this purpose. That's the $269,277. And I'd be happy to take any questions, if anybody in council or you has any at this point.
Okay, he recommended it all. We don't, if we do this, we've got to have two resolutions, one, transfer some money out of the reserve fund, and the other one to change the $269,000 left, if it is going to the table, and that's one of the resolutions. It was taken into consideration, too, of all the other work we had, we were going to have done, if we had to float one, we would pay, what we take out of the reserve fund, we pay that back to the reserve fund, the bond. Wasn't what-
Yes, sir. Size. Yeah, the second resolution is to follow up 2016-28.
A recommendation, don't, from the Subcommittee, don't take a second, but this resolution would have to have a second, wouldn't it?
I would suggest, just from a procedural standpoint, but resolution, second motion.
I'll ask for a motion for Resolution 16-28.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we've got a second, now we have a discussion. Anybody got anything?
I want to make sure I understand the resolution, if you're just with the 269-277, transfer out of bond, utilize it, repair it with-
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
That's the remaining balance.
Yes, sir. Remaining balance in the new, in the new Hillcrest.
The language is a little squirrely in there, lawyers on it. The, and that was to be consistent with what the bond ordinance said, so that clearly takes the action that council can do in moving that money that's left in bondage into another property in Hillcrest.
And that goes against the-
Yes, sir.
This, this 269-277 will remain as part of the improvement of the Hillcrest Square, which we can end up with.
Any other questions?
What's going to guarantee that this roof not leak again, that affects the new one?
Just don't have a guarantee of that.
Twenty-year.
It looks like we didn't get Dooka a job there to start with.
Well, it's the last big thing here, but-
That it's not going to leak again.
Mr. Rush, can you address that? Yes, we did a, we didn't do a full roof replacement when we moved into Hillcrest in 2000, 2001. We essentially did some patching on the existing roof that was there. We got 16 years out of that patching, maybe nine-
We got sixteen years out of that patching, maybe not quite sixteen years, but it's time now to do an actual roof replacement. We are proposing a T P O roof, similar to what we did on the Church Street office, and that does have a two-year workmanship warranty as well as a twenty-year materials warranty, similar, again, similar to what we had done at Church Street office. So there would be warranties against leakage on that, on the new roof.
Are there any further questions?
One other question, Mr. Chairman. We fixed the roof, the money is proposed here to fix the roof, but it's including replacements, interior panels, like this. So then we have to approach that as well, correct?
Correct. And what we're currently doing is part of, part of this overall process, evaluating all the needs within the building, whether they be space needs, remodeling needs, carpet, tile. We're trying to put some cost to all the needs in the building, tiling, ceiling tiles being one of those needs. But yes, once the roof is repaired, replacing it.
Then we go after the other items.
Correct.
There's carpet, there's cabin, and.
Yes.
Cabin, so.
And there's also, when the building was designed, we had certain uses in mind for the individual suites. Some of those uses have changed over the years, and that lends itself to some, you know, utilization issues, where the counters are located at, offices, office space, some departments have grown, others have not, personnel-wise and whatnot, and we need to look at some minor reconfigurations, remodeling, that sort of things in this whole process. It's an overall, at the same time, we're looking at an efficiency evaluation with a company, looking at our lighting in the building. How much can we save if we replace all of our fluorescent lighting, the LED lighting? Our AC units on the roof were all new in two thousand, they're all sixteen years old now. We've seen maintenance costs on the heat and air units. We have about twenty-five units mounted on the roof. We're looking at the efficiency of replacing those. There's some special financing available from some of these companies in the state that is out there to help us upgrade to more efficient units without realizing the capital costs associated with it. So we're kind of in a full-scale evaluation of the building as a whole, the roof being the very first thing that needs to be done, and we have these funds out there to start.
And the planning that Mr. Rush and Mr. Kenny are doing is greatly appreciated, it's long overdue, so thank you.
Do we have any other questions, comments? Okay, we're going to vote on sixteen dash twenty-eight, all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven blue round. All right, next resolution, sixteen dash twenty-nine. It allows us to use some money out of the reserve fund for the balance of this, so Mr. Rush can go ahead and get bids, go ahead and get this work done.
On the roof, this is a clarification, sorry, Mr. Chairman, just a clarification, this is only the roof portion. We still haven't quantified the rest of it, but this, this makes logical sense to replace the roof, then worry about replacing what's on the inside, fix what's on the inside.
We're only talking about the roof.
And let me mention the plaque that you have in there. Mr. Kirk and I are working on this number as to what the balance in the contingency reserve is as of September thirtieth. There'll be obviously an unaudit amount, but we'll, we'll insert that amount sometime to hopefully tomorrow or Thursday.
Rob Mike, you're talking down about ten thousand, about eighty thousand.
There was actually, in our original bid, there was actually a twenty-nine thousand dollar discount to do the entire roof at once. When we bid it, we will try to do it in parts, and as, as a whole, to give us some options when the bids come back as to how much of the roof we can afford, how much of the roof we can't do.
Just as a further clarification, again, to point out that any money that says up to three hundred thousand dollars, any money that is borrowed from the reserve, the intention is to repay that once we look at a, a bond that we might have to issue in terms of taking care of all of the needs of the Hillcrest Facility. That will then replenish these funds that are used from the fund balance.
Are there any other questions?
The original quote was two forty, was five ten, do I understand if we're right?
I know that may have changed, but that was.
The original quote that we received back November of last year, about one year ago, the total amount for the entire roof was five hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred, that's if you added up the individual sections. If you did them all at once, it was a twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollar discount, which puts you right at five hundred ten thousand dollars to do the entire roof at, at one time. Again, that quote is one year old.
So we're looking at two forty-one, I understand you need a little cushion there because it's forty years old and it made the material and all labor very well too.
Looking at about what, two forty-one?
It's two forty-one, that's over by mine.
You have two sixty-nine and five ten, you can wrap that up, you don't have to do that, I believe you're not really there.
Three forty-four, you push.
We have to pay five ten.
That's two forty-one, Mr. Chairman. Two sixty-nine, that's about five ten, or somewhere between two forty-one.
Yes.
We're looking at three, yeah, that's how around, so we're looking at thirty, three hundred, might not exceed three hundred, is it?
Correct. The one, one thing that isn't in this quote is any roof, the roof is actually corrugated metal underneath the roofing material, and, you know, if we have any, any repair that we need to do on that as well, that is not included in the five ten. So we do need to allot some, some money for that as well, or anything that might be uncovered during the roofing process. You're talking about seventy-five thousand square feet on multiple roofs. I don't know that we're going to get as lucky as we did Church Street by not having any issues underneath the roofing material.
Any further questions? Now I'll ask for motion for resolution sixteen dash twenty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, I would for approval of resolution twenty sixteen in reference to transfer out of reserve from the contingency fund.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Sir.
Motion in the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven blue round. We all agree on that. Okay, did we have everyone sign up, vote, count in? Okay, we got a comment, county council members, I'll start with all.
I'll call it, Mr. Chair.
Ted?
None, I, sir.
Ted?
None.
None.
Just want to again thank the dispatchers and everybody at nine one one, EMS, and Mr. Lindley and our fire, fire volunteers.
Oh, I was approached by Mr. Weeks at the Planning Commission about having a quota at her meetings, they only make once a month, and she asked me to ask the council persons up here to talk to the person that's been nominated for the Planning Commission and ask them if they're going to attend meetings or not going to attend meetings. And she said the biggest problem she was having was Mr. Jones's appointment and Ms. Anderson's appointment.
Not to call anybody out here.
What did they do with this one? She called me.
They're not calling, okay.
But, I know it's, you know, it's just a, a job that you don't get paid in anymore, but it's a lot of responsibility, and her, they accept that responsibility, they accept the position.
Well, can't get anything accomplished if they don't call. I'll have a quarrel. There is, there is a vacancy or two also?
Right, one.
One vacancy.
What, what, which one is that?
No, no names.
What is it?
I'd call you out here.
Six.
I think it's three.
Okay, all.
You work tomorrow, I'll come in.
With that being said, I guess we got an executive session, we have a legal briefing and two contractual matters, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Motion in second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven blue round. We'll take a two-minute recess.